All right, good evening, everyone. It is time to call our regularly scheduled June board meeting to order. Glad to see everyone in the nice weather that we're having, and we've got a full house. Appreciate everyone being here for sure. It's election night, so if anybody's got anything painting to do. If anybody wants this seat, you're welcome to do that as well. Uh, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. And it would move by Renee and seconded by Kathy that we would approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? And motion carries. All right, now we have arrived at our first opportunity for public comment. Do we have any members of the poet president? Okay, seeing none, we will move to minutes.
Um, I approve that we approve the minutes for the May twenty twenty five meeting.
Right, so moving properly, seconded that we would approve the minutes for the May twenty twenty five meeting. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. That will bring us to the president's report.
Because we didn't have a report last meeting because our librarian person was in hospital. We have two to approve tonight. Have talked about if you wish. Um, I moved to, I moved the board approved the April two thousand twenty five operating bills totaling four hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second.
A second?
Yes, the movement properly seconded that we would approve the April operating bills. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? And motion carries.
Who can receive and file the April two thousand twenty-five financial report?
Yes, the movement properly seconded that we would receive and file the April uh financial reports. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? And motion carries.
Okay, nice to me. I uh moved the board through the May two thousand twenty-five top of the notes column. Nine hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred ninety. Ninety-two. Oh, shucks, tell me. Yep, nine, nine. Thousand twenty-one.
Nine hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Thank you.
Nine hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-one cents. I'm so impressed.
Okay, um, is there a second? Second. Okay, it's the moving problem seconded that we would open operating bills. Uh, any discussion?
Is the big increase because of board meeting?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Any other questions? The call out, we've replaced through in here at twelve miles, um, for the public to hear this. All right, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Move to receive and file the May two thousand twenty-five financial reports. That word?
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we would receive and file the May financial reports. Any discussion? And seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Michigan uh Michigan class updates. In May, our earned income was forty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Our year-to-date earned income was two hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred twenty-nine. And our month-end balance was twelve million three hundred ninety thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents. On May first, our daily yield was four point four one three five percent, and on May thirty-first, it was four point three seven six seven. I also received an email from America Bank about their shift to the global messaging standard ISO twenty oh twenty-two for wire transfer. And I'm waiting to hear back from Michigan class to see if they're aware of this update and if it will affect our ability to do wire transfers with America. Go ahead and say.
Okay, thank you very much, Kathy. Uh, that will bring us to friends in the library. I know we don't have Stacy today, but any updates from the friends?
So the gala was the last uh Friday evening on June sixth. It was uh they got so many compliments. The entertainment was fabulous for those of you were intended in attendance. I mean, the range of the entertainers, you went from opera to, you know, rock and roll type, you know, kind of stuff. It was fabulous. And so they got a really good turnout, not turnout, but really good feedback from that. They did put a survey out at the um friends for them to sign in and ask questions like, do you want to keep this format? Or do you remember a different format? You know, what can we do better and that kind of thing? Um, and I've seen the initial results, and it was that most people wanted to keep that same format. Well, that's not really what they want to do. But also, we'll see really. So yeah, it was a good turnout. Um, and then, so they're on break. They don't meet during, well, their annual meeting is the June event, and so they're off. As it looks like coming up in July, so they'll regroup and come back.
Okay, um, I cannot make it, but on Saturday, I was at our neighborhood uh ice cream social, and I heard from several neighbors that they really enjoyed the event and heard all those great things about the uh entertainment as well. So, you know, maybe it's a matter of us working with uh Stacy and team, and maybe there's an additional event, right, that happens to draw some other audiences. But we keep that gala because I think a lot of people really do it here.
Well, and it's it's appreciation for the friends, right?
Thank you for the opportunity.
It does, it does cost them a chunk of money, but so does any appreciation, right? Yeah, yes.
All right, well, Kelly, uh, you can keep the floor. We'll move to the director of the court.
So I gave to you some of the new materials in your packets, I believe, uh, the booklets and the the Skiver and that kind of thing. Um, a couple of so many things there. Um. Yes, there we go. So we're in our second weekend. So first time, first, um, I just signed up with the universe. So we're on our second weekend. We have nearly uh two thousand participants as of Monday or Tuesday. We received our first postcard. If you saw that on social media, you can, we've seen several of them, but uh Sarah was very excited when we see, received our first one. And so, um, and then, um, then as she had posted that there was a couple uh comments, uh, one was that I ate lunch downtown yesterday while I was sitting outside a young girl. Uh, and whoever she was, went stopped to read the crossword puzzle clue in the window because in downtown Farmington, you can do the Scamager. And then here is the coloring project, the mural, so the art project, so, um. And so, and then I had a dad and daughter in last night who said how much they enjoyed doing the crossword. So, I mean, it's getting a lot of feedback. These are the missions that could give you extra points and that. So that seems to be going well. We talk Tuesdays. Our first one is Tuesday, June seventeenth. This one is from five to seven, so it's at dinnertime instead of lunchtime. And this one will be out of front lawn. We'll have long gates in a fifth sec. Um, trying to think what else we care. Just because I already used, oh, strategic plan accomplishments. I wanted to just have you so we set our goals for each year, and then this is like just a review of the ones that and where we are at in progress and and um whether we completed them in progress, what's not started and stuff. And so um, for the first one, we did the building accessibility audit because that will tie into master planning and that kind of stuff for the building renovation. So we did that um, back in January or February. Um, our goal was to provide barrier-free access to resources. And so with patron points, when we did that, it's um it's the address verification, so nobody has to come in and renew their library card anymore. It can be done automatically. Um, and then we have the instant digital library cards now. Um, so you don't actually physically have to have a card anymore. So um, when you sign up for a card online now, you just get access to a number immediately because it verifies your stuff. And then no one has to get a new card anymore. If they, well, they can get a new card, and but they can keep their number, so that if someone like me was memorized their number, I never had to give up my number, but now I can get a new card. That's why I wouldn't get a new card, and I love some of the new cards, but I wouldn't do it because I'd have to memorize a whole more. Um, so goal three point one was to nurture a responsive and innovative work culture that empowers staff, and this time we focused on supervisor training, which we completed our last session in May. And that one was about evaluations and that kind of stuff. So I feel like the staff were very um grateful and got a lot out of that supervisor training. And um, I'm going to be sharing some of those things that we learned in that with the staff so they understand what it means when we come to say, you know, uh, one-minute redirect or a one-minute uh breakies or something like that. So they're familiar. And I also want to share out um the different personality styles that people have because I think it's important to know how people communicate, whether you're, what dis style you are. And so, so that when because even I do it now. Oh, I understand when I'm communicating this person, this is the deep dominant. And so, and so there's a different way that you have to communicate. So I, and that goes in, that ties into what we want to um do in July, which is to bring on, like we did the Zing train last staff day. And we want to do it sort of three, three um steps to great service. It's two steps for great service to ourselves. So this is an internal type of thing. And that flows into the core values that I gave you and that kind of thing. So we're all on the same page, and we know how to treat each other in respect and that kind of thing. So that's kind of where we're working on that. Um, and then utilize community input. And we didn't get the community surveys and focus because we're kind of more focused, more on staff right now with the staff survey and that kind of thing. But we are, um, oh, Jill, I forgot to do this. Um, we are developing uh one space for tracking community feedback and review orderly. That was one of our goals. And so that is in progress. We have a system where we get the comments and we put it into, is it a form?
Yeah, so it will be um a Microsoft Outlook form. And um, we're piloting it right now with the comment cards and the, any social media feedback we get. So it's just myself, Crystal Peterson and Sarah that are in marketing. And right now it's just like an Outlook form where when we get feedback, it's like, you know, was this a comment card, phone call, social media, whatever? Is this about facilities, services? And so this allows us for every comment for us to track like what it's about, like, you know, um, actually, I can pull that. I have not looked at it in a little bit. But this allows us to gather data about our comments um to see like what are some themes? Like, are we constantly getting feedback about our programs? And, you know, are we getting feedback about facilities? Oh, here it is. Okay. So the feedback is like, or so the form covers like, when was it submitted? Did the patron include their contact information? If they did, there's fields for us to put in the contact information. A lot of times patrons don't include the contact information. So it's method of submission, feedback type, comment, compliment, suggestion, complaint, feedback topic, collections, customer service, facilities, grounds, policies, events, social media content, um, a space for them to, for us to put in what the message is, um, action taken by sta- by staff, responded to patron, did not respond, pass feedback to department heads, that sort of thing. So we wanted to pilot it for at least three months so we could see if there's any, like, other category that we need to add to the form. And then kind of our plan is to eventually release this out to staff. And so anytime they get a comment, even if it's at the desk, they can pop it into this form.
Yes, so that's kind of what we're working on with that. And then, you know, coming up for the next fiscal year, we'll figure out, we'll look at the strategic plan, what are the goals that still need to work on and send new ones. Need to back in July, probably by this time. At this point, probably August. Um, a couple of things that are not on. I think I gave you, um, so I gave you this G M C D architects. This is the updated timeline on projects needing, like, we not received very briefly, uh, Tuesday to go over. He had some, he would direct plan, give you like dates um of when things are supposed to be. I think it's your second page there, Renee, right after, under your agenda. And anyway, you can see like um phase construction estimate, it's just starting in January and September. Eventually, we'll have to face what projects we want to start with, what building you want to start with, and those kind of things. I mean, obviously, outdoor projects would have, wouldn't start in January, they would start later. But you can see his estimate is done in September twenty-six for phase one projects. Um, but this is the thing that's been uh he's going to do construction, man, CM proposals in August, and then, you know, those uh, going out for bid for negotiations for construction is November. So this is just an updated list of things for, for your reference. Wanted to share that with you. I also, I think I sent you an email that they were going to survey property because city wants to do stuff. So that cost is coming in for the library at seven thousand five hundred sixty dollars. So.
Now that is Farmington, right?
No, our property too.
Right, I'm saying in downtown.
Yes, 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 yes.
It was just farm.
It's just farm.
That's farm vacation. Yes, because, because we're doing, I mean, there might be a common time of year, but we're not doing, we're not doing the outside work here right now.
Yes.
So this is just Farmington. Um, so they'll get started on that, and then we'll actually have well, well, no, I didn't put a picture of what he, their survey or that is, but I can't say that, but like, they are also are, you know, we own the property, the parking, half the parking lot across the way on State Street with the city. And so they will be surveying the actual things that, and then mainly it's um this whole area in yellow, which you can pass around. No, State Street. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, yes. And I think it's funny because they're actually going, like, it looks like they own part of the buildings. If you look where they're lying. Yeah, it's like they own part of Heights Brewing Building, like half of it. I don't know, but there's so many. So, let's see, um.
That would be fun.
Um, I went to the city council meeting on, Farmington City Council meeting on Monday and accepted a proclamation for LGBTQ pride month. Um, and they reference the reason they asked uh us to come is because they reference on the very bottom, whereas resources exist in Farmington Hills to support LGBTQ, LGBTQ community members, including alphabet soup at the Farmington Community Library, a group for teams and allies that is focused on creating a safe space for young people at the library. So I went in and accepted that on behalf of the library.
You stayed there in the holidays?
I did not. Was it wrong?
Just curious.
Okay, I mean, there were five proclamations that night, and then it's so it, I was there, started at seven thirty, I was there at like eighteen fifteen, eight thirty, and then thought they were all there for public comment, because I love public comment. And I didn't, but I didn't stay for it because but they were all there for the proclamation because Farmington Fury, this her team, was one of the ones that was getting recognized. And so it was all the parents, kids, and stuff like that, so. Um, let me see what else I have to share with you. Um. Oh, so statistics, we are almost to, you know, we've had this goal for several years to reach one million checkouts, right? So we're currently at nine hundred and seven thousand, but I don't have eBooks, but um Megan pulled statistics up through whatever she pulled this statistics. So now we're at nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-six without eBooks. So eBooks will be a chunk. So if we didn't even do eBooks, we have to do seventy thousand six hundred and twenty-four and nineteen days. That means we have to check out three thousand seven hundred and eighteen items per day. So you're all passed with doing that.
I'll check out, if we can get every Farmington student to get something once a day.
No, just Talia, that's our goal. We waited like, so we've had this goal for the past, what, three years, maybe? Yeah, so.
That's a Stevens point, maybe, like the communication at the school, like a little blitz of, hey.
And I give them that pink bag. I said, now you have to go and fill them up because I, we need to get a million checkout. I have some kids who are very invested.
Maybe they change their category to like, you know, like ten thousand.
Uh, okay, I wanted to, oh, we did hold a retirement party for Sally last Wednesday. And so that was, that was very nice to pay a second thing. Yeah, and so, um, um, oh, and then, so you've implemented standard and test changed. Um, so, so they include, so we don't hire anybody under sixteen, so it doesn't really affect us that much. Um, but what it does affect is our volunteers, our team volunteers, because they actually consider volunteering work, especially if you're doing it for, you need to have some, the library sign off on it. So they now need, will need a work permit, which I think they probably do right now. Um, and um, and then if they're under sixteen, they can't work past seven or volunteer past seven, yeah, those kind of things. And um and so the new hours went into effect for under sixteen on April second. However, the, you no longer will get a work permit from the school that you attend. It will come from Leo. And so what if the library wants to have volunteers starting in October of twenty twenty, it's eighteen months, so twenty twenty-six, um. There will be a portal that we'll have to go through, sign up to be an authorized employer. Um, and then you get authorized. And then if somebody wanted to volunteer, they then would have to go to the Leo portal and say they want to volunteer for us because they'll find it in there. And then we have to say yes, so it has to match. And so it's a much more detailed process. So, um, what that does affect though is like teen advisory board, like we can no longer, unless they have a work permit, we can't really sign off on their um, work.
Yeah, we're having.
Yeah.
You know about how many, about how many teen volunteers that we have?
I feel like the teen advisory board has a good study. I don't know. What do you think? Twenty, thirty, maybe?
I don't say about twenty people, but you know, um, Rebecca and Sarah throughout the year, and Jenny prior to that would have like standalone programs, um, like one of them was like a thing where they put together care packages for police officers or um create the tie blankets to give out to the senior care facilities. So beyond that, they had that.
So that's changes that we'll have to figure out going forward, but we have to be compliant, be in compliance with that orders right now for anyone under sixteen. Sure, you have been fined without having worked on that, but they would get that at school, so it's fine. So, should be continued.
Yes, okay, so under the um, the library card, how are they automating the address verification expires? Uh, whatever system they use, like the third-part patron point uses some kind of third-party system?
It's like when, um, you know, you go online to get your um experience credit report or something, and it'll say, did you ever live at this address? Did you ever have this car? It's that kind of verification.
And the instant digital library card, does that work?
So when they go register online for a card, they get one immediately? And so you used to get PAC Reg with four numbers or something?
Yeah.
You don't get that anymore. You get an actual library card with a two, three, zero, two, three.
So is that then used on the phone, on their phone? How does it get the card? I mean, they got it.
They don't need a card.
How does the system know that that's them when they want to check?
Well, because you could use it on a mobile app. You could type in your number.
You could, okay, so you don't need a physical card. Okay, so you'd have to remember your number.
They eventually do get a card, right?
And they kind of come in and get a card.
Let me ask that question then, like our process of people sign up digitally and they get the instant card. Are we following that with a physical card or?
Yeah. All right, wait, so where this started for me was during, when the, when the kids were locked out of, you know, when everybody was locked down, kids needed library card and they couldn't, um, we could give them access to certain things, uh, but anyway, the point is anyone who wanted a card without coming into the library couldn't get one. But now that that's what's changed. So, yeah, eventually, if you come into the library, you can get a physical card, but if you don't want to, you can still use this number.
Didn't they register? Do they have the option to indicate if they want the physical card or not?
Laura, can you answer that? Do you know? No, I don't know right now. I do know that we've had people sign up and they've wanted a physical card and, and weren't able to come in. And so we did um send them in the mail for that, yeah.
Okay.
So the next question about.
Yeah, so if you sign up for patron port, you get, what else does it do? Patron point, I, I'm, I want to use patron point. What does it do?
Point is not for you. It's an internal thing.
It's the service, library switch to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I'm not using it at all.
No.
So how does it verify that I'm not using my neighbor's address? When I'm signing up for the digital, digital card?
Well, it's verifying somewhere along the line that your name is attached to an address.
And it sounds like from what Jill shared, you've got to answer those qualification questions. So it's going to look at the database about Kathy Brown and then ask questions about her. And if you can't answer those questions correctly, then you fail the process.
Isn't that the library card expiration? I'm sorry, what you, what he just said, was that for the library card expiration?
I think that's all.
It's all, okay, yeah.
And Sarah did a presentation on patron point, I believe, and in February, yeah.
Oh, I did one other thing I do want to, we are getting uh wands, circulation wand, so that means that you can take this one and go right down the row of items on the shelf, and it will pick out lost items, missing items, books on hold.
Laura is so excited.
I took first spell.
Okay, so you all are very excited. Um, patron, we don't have to use that.
No.
Um, talk to us about what that does though for kind of um operational efficiency. That was sooner, that's going to be you guys.
Now they take a list out, this like twenty-page list and look for lost items or missing items, and they have to go. Now you're just taking that wand down the shelf and anything that's out of place even, even if it's not even the right spot, it will, it will flag it a little bit to the right.
So is the wand scanning the, the label?
It's RFID.
So it's RFID, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah.
I want to use that.
You want to test that one out?
So on that, if you have a skinny book that has RFID in a skinny book, is it actually going to be able to read it? Because I think initially that was a problem.
I think they're more technologically savvy now, but we'll find out, we'll let you know.
Well, and then you always have me as a backup. I never, it feels like I never been to the library that I don't find something this way.
Always, always.
Always to the, right, to the death.
And that's because when you want to check it out and just.
Anyway.
Patrons do it, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. One thing that we can do with the, obviously, meeting is
I was reading is, um, if in Polaris, they put a note in a book like, oh, this book has damage, like, you know, water damage or something, but it's not so bad that it can't circulate again. You could program the wand to be like, hey, alert on anything that has a damaged note or anything that hasn't circulated in five years. And as you go along, so now you have to generate these lists, you just.
Always.
Going to be taking a wand.
You can't stand. Twelve to fourteen weeks, like, I don't know why. Oh, because they were, they're running out. I think it, like, they didn't have any in stock or something, so, yeah. Okay, that's, any other questions for me on my part of the? Dr. Strick part?
Okay, excellent. I think we have a few staff introductions today.
I think that was an excellent lead in. Right? Um. You got your PowerPoint presentation up. This is Elizabeth Johnson, Johnson, and this is Laura Luckins. They both, both work in our patron services department, which is circulation. And they will explain, let me just make sure. Slide. Okay.
All right, uh, hi, thanks for having us. Uh, I am, next slide, Elizabeth Johnson, I am on the shelf. The Farmington branch and my partner in crime here is Laura Luckins, she's a services assistant. We are part of a team of thirty people, mostly part-time, and we wanted to come in and talk to you just a little bit about how the library runs day to day from that circulation perspective, next slide. Um, but first, a little bit about the two of us. Um, I am actually an electrical engineer and attorney by education. Uh, I worked as a patent lawyer until twenty twenty-two, when I gave up trading health for wealth and retired. I am also a dreaded, uh, childless cat lady and a, uh, community cat caretaker for the little strays in my area. And as a fun fact, I am a saber fencer and I once got to fence the two thousand and four Olympic gold medalist and I hit her twice. I ended up at the library, uh, because for two years Laura consistently told me what a joy it was to work here. Um, and so far she's been right.
I'm so glad to hear that. Really wouldn't stop talking about it. Every time I saw her at the gym, I would tell her how great my library job was and how much I liked it. So glad it's working out for you. Okay, hi, I'm Laura, um. Oh, you have such good pictures. Okay, um, so a little bit about me, I went to Michigan State University amongst several other universities. I rode crew for MSU, that's the little like rower people up in the corner. Um, my background is in chemistry and material synthesis. Um, my master's degree is in chemistry. Um, a lot of my work focused on synthesizing, um, really long name stuff that will not give you cancer when it burns. Um, and so the reason I got into that is because I worked for the Farmington Health Fire Department, um, which I really loved, like you show up and you are the best part of somebody's worst day. Like you are there to, to help them and it is just the best feeling. Um, and so what I learned working there amongst many things is that, um, a lot of the times firefighters develop cancer over the years largely because they're exposed to all of these things that as they burn, they off gas really dangerous materials. Um, so I invented a flavor retardant that does not give you cancer when it burns. Yeah. I'm M L I S right now at the University of Alabama, which I'm really enjoying. Yeah. Next slide. Oh, next slide, yeah, thanks. Okay. So, um, we wanted to speak a little bit about the numbers and sort of the scale that we're working on when we're working in patron services. So this data actually comes, um, from some SQL coding that we can do and from our backend reports when we were speaking about, when Kelly was speaking about printing the twenty pages of reports and you go into the stacks and you hunt for the things. Some other things that you can do is look at how many active library card holders we have, and I'm, I'm sure you know a lot of this, but, um, how many physical items we have in the library between all their different collections. Um, right now we are maybe possibly on track to do one billion circulations per year. I, I know Maria asked me, I worked at the summer reading program kickoff today and she asked if I checked out three thousand, um, um, items. And I said three thousand and one, so we're good for today. Um, so just the numbers so that maybe you have a picture of the scope of what we're working with on a day to day basis.
Are you, am I done?
Yeah, that was good, thank you. Okay, here's everything that I do. Um, and so instead of telling you all about the eight thousand things that we do on a daily basis, I think what I more wanted to point out mostly is that, um, there is a lot of different aspects to my workflow. Um, ranging from library cards to helping patrons find items that they need to figuring out where to direct them if they have a question that's maybe outside of my scope of practice, that's not something for me to answer. Um, we repair damaged books that come in along with a wonderful volunteer. Um. Um, and I think what this job really needs and, or at least what I enjoy most about bringing to this job is I love, um, and loves working with the community. Think that's sort of like what the theme was of my slide previously, I love working with the community. I love making connections with people. I love when, I, I love when Gloria calls me and tells me for the fifth time about the time she met Barbara Streisand or Vicki calls and, and comes sees and comes to see us and every other word out of her mouth is the F-bomb and then she looks around and like realizes that she's in the library. Like I love getting to know these people. Um, and so that's part of it. And the other part that I think is really important is the fluid intelligence that's sort of needed to be successful in this position. This is not a hard job to do competently, but it's a hard job to be really good at. Um, and I think that's what we're really, really working on in this department is being really good at being that frontline regardless of sort of where we have to follow the web to, to get to the success of our Patreon.
Excellent.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, in terms of the more tangible things, we also do prioritize making sure everything is very accessible at the library. I'm sure you guys are very familiar with our friend Hugo, uh, who starts that process of sorting books, at least, uh, at the twelve mile location. Uh, but now that he's a name, has been working for a year, he wanted to say hello. Um, uh, the right is actually one of my favorite projects I did, that's just the mystery collection, um, at the Farmington branch. But you can see, uh, that last set of shelves is spaced too far apart and they were all like that. Um, so the poor, short people like me who then get old and can't use those steps. Uh, you know, I think it makes a real difference if you've got to be doing this to try to get a book versus this in terms of, you know, just being able to get stuff. And then the next slide.
Excuse me.
Oh. So before, until we get our wands and probably a little after.
Yeah, so, um, we can run reports using the backend software that we have, but I've been working on learning SQL code. Um, because I, yeah, it's been so interesting because we can generate sort of more tailored approaches to what we do and it allows us to pull up really specific record sets right in Polaris rather than going into the backend report system. Um, and so we can sort of generate these, um, custom specified tags for what we're. Oh, next slide. Thank you. And then we get this, um, which is part of the twenty-page report and we go through monthly and we look for things where our patrons have told us, um, I returned that, I'm certain I returned that. Look for it or it's lost, it's never coming back. Well, maybe you did return it. It just didn't get checked in properly. Um, things with the status that might allow us to get that book checked in properly and circulated.
In addition, there's a report of people like me who left the book on the airplane. But I come in and I tell you.
Yes, you're in such good company with that. And I told you, I bought the library so many books over the years. Yes.
And then in tandem with doing those specific searches, we actually, um, in the shelving department, go through every single item in the library on a reasonably regular basis to check, is it in the right location? Is it in the right place on a shelf and is it damaged, does need to be pulled and, uh, you know, looked at by librarians? We don't want books like that going out to our patrons. Um, at this location, there are a larger proportion of books to shelve, so they focus on some problem areas. You know, sometimes kids section those thin books you were talking about, just look like a patron's, shuffle them. Uh, you know, so they try to get to those areas four times a year and they go through end to end the collection once a year. And at the branch, we go through the entire collection about three times a year. Um, so we'll see if this one works. As you mentioned, like you don't really get a shelf that has things not out of place, so, you know, if the one is showing beep, 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 beep. Uh, you might still need us, uh, the next slide. So I'm sorry, I didn't get better pictures of this, uh, but we do in-house book repair when we pull those books off the shelf that are damaged or when they get checked in. Um, we have some really good training on making sure like if a book is fully ripped out of its binding, we can put it back together so it's not that detectable, uh, or, you know, torn pages and damaged covers. Um, so helping to save the library a little bit of money.
I would say we no longer have tea pages like we used to. They're like, well, it's not detectable.
So.
You gotta buy it for that film plastic. It's amazing.
Magical.
It's magical.
Now, will Patron, uh, help you in what you do?
I'm excited. I, I think, I don't know necessarily if it's going to help us directly. What I am excited for is the fact that it's going to make our materials more accessible to our patrons. We have a lot of folks who, for one reason or another, coming into the library is really challenging for them. Um, and so to be able to just get them a library card and get them a library card number and provide them accessibility is, is huge.
Anybody having questions for Laura and Elizabeth?
I don't have any questions, but I made note of several skills and, uh, this surprising, uh, set of, um, skills between the two of you.
I know, isn't that.
That's a lot of skills behind that desk that we would not necessarily.
The backgrounds of staff are amazing.
Yeah.
Laura, you just have to explain your next adventure though.
Oh.
I'm telling you, this adventure is.
Okay, I'm, uh, I'm parti, I like to run. Um, and I'm participating in a running event from, um, Petoskey to Alpena. And you get thirty-three hours and it's a hundred and like six, two, six, whatever, one hundred plus miles. Yes, and I'm going to, I'm so excited because there's, um, other staff members who are going to be joining me, not the whole way, but they volunteered. They're going to walk with me for five miles or three miles. Um, it's really, I'm really thankful for that. Yeah, I'm really excited. Oh, thanks for that opportunity.
I'm just amazed at that. I, and you know, I walk, I can walk nine miles, you know, two and a half hours, but a hundred miles, that's like.
You should come.
I feel like that's a lot. So, you know, I, I'm thinking about it, we'll see. Are you, are you running or walking?
Yeah. Yes, so I'm hoping to average, um, probably a, like a fourteen-minute mile. Yeah.
Fast mile.
No, but I, I also enjoy running like very fast, so we'll, it's like, we'll see how it kind of plays out over longer distances.
We're waiting for you.
Thank you. I don't, I want to turn around really quick and take it off me. Um, I liked what you said about the, the staff at this, um, at both locations. For a lot of people, this is like what I call an encore career, where we already went through a career, like I saved up, um, we saved up, both of us, saved up all of our dollars and exited the workforce. Um, like hit the retirement number and, and were left and I made it two weeks. And I realized that I needed to go outside and talk to people. Um, and so I said, okay, well, I'm going to get a part-time job and I'm not going to apply anywhere that I don't think I would want to work. Um, and this turned into sort of something that, this, this turned into something that I really love doing and I look forward to doing every day. Um, so I just, I just want to share that and I'm really thankful for the opportunity to work with all these amazing people, patrons and, and staff members and I just love it here.
Well, I, I loved your story, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew you had diverse backgrounds because I knew the ball, but just to see it up on screen, it's like, wow.
Thank you for the time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm gonna stop by the circulation desk every day. What's your story? Um, thank you so much. That will bring us to our subcommittee reports and so personnel, but first. Yeah, so do, I'll turn it over to you.
Um, we'll start with some health, retiree healthcare stuff and.
Or, oh, you mean for the obtaining, but on your business.
Be sure that we've already discussed it since the retiree healthcare trust. And the access that we have in that trust for our retiree healthcare. And the whole discussion was can we spend some of the money for the trust to pay the retirement healthcare? So, yes, we can, we've decided that a hundred sixty-seven percent overfunded at this point, but you can only use it for retiree healthcare. So, and talking to MERS and Plant Moran. Um, so we can, um, you, the board just has to approve it. Um, so what, what Plant Moran is suggesting is that it has to stay as a budget line in the budget. Um, and so you would just hang it month, month until, you know, and then get re-first about. Yes. Yeah. Trust. So, I don't, it's just not on the agenda, so I don't, can also wait till July if you want to add it. I forgot to add it, it's up to you. It's not, it's not that time sensitive, we can start it anytime.
If it's not time sensitive, I'd rather, we can kind of put it out before the meeting and get everybody a chance to review it. Yeah, but we have discussed it.
Well, then the other thing, we've been, that's busy, I sent you all the updated timeline for the hiring process for the library director. And there were two other documents attached, is the job listing and the other is the job description. So the posting is the document that we would email out to our networks, post on other website. That's what the first thing you would read about the job is. And then the script, the job description has a specific, you know, uh, purview of what the, the responsibilities and expectations for the director, which is what the board would use for any about, the evaluation we do of the director. So the job description had not been updated in a minute, in a minute meeting like a few years.
Fourteen years.
Fourteen, fifteen years. Um, and so maybe we worked on updating that and, and the job posting talks a little bit about our organization, about the libraries, kind of what's to come. Has obviously the qualifications a little, so it's not the full detail of the thing. Uh, but you will see there is a link in the posting that that you can.
With the job, the Excel, but that link's not ready yet.
Yeah.
I just put it in there so that.
So, yeah, after the responsibilities, it says, you know, is it the website, when the posting is actually live, that website will have all this information. Thank you to the Personnel Committee members, Renee, Kathy, Ernie, for working on this. We did look at other li, area libraries and not even very local, like a lot of job postings, uh, to develop these. And we used the information we gathered from the listening sessions that we hosted with staff, um, May twenty-ninth and May thirtieth at the Farmington location and here, and we had a total. At the Farmington location and here, and we had a total of twenty-six staff who attended the two listening sessions. We had over sixty staff members who responded to the survey. Um, I could not be more impressed with that survey response rate. Um, and we got a lot of good feedback. You all have the results of those as well. Um, so we took what we heard from staff that was important to them about the leadership style they're looking for and is important to that, the communication style. Um, and you'll, there are direct, you know, sentences that are included in the posting and the description from those. And we, if, I always say if we're asking people to give their time and fill out a survey, attend a listening session, we want to be responsive to what they say. Um, and so we will continue using what we learned in the survey and the listening sessions, not just in these. But in that, we started drafting interview questions, incorporating some of what the sta- the staff finds important. Um, and we'll keep that throughout the process. And one of my favorite questions in the survey, um, and we asked that in the listening sessions is what advice would you give the new director? And our hope is that we can compile what the staff said and give that as part of the orientation and onboarding when the new director is here, cause I think that's just a gift and a bridge, right, to, um, build early on. Um, so that's a lot we've done in the last four weeks, in the last month since our last board meeting. Um, any questions on anything before I
Yeah, I just have a, a question about like the mechanisms being used to prove we're gonna post it on our website. Are there any other mechanisms?
Yes, we have a whole recruitment plan. Um, I can't remember what the final number was. I think we had twelve, twelve different places, including one of which is the FCL website and social media. Um, and so there's the Michigan, you know, library. Our, um, ALA, which is the American Library Association. And so several different places that we can distribute the job posting. So our hope is that we get word out to as many people as possible and get some really high-quality candidates to apply. Yeah, we have a recruitment plan that'll go, whenever the posting live, we can start posting on other job portals as well.
Is there anyone that might wanna change anything that you have your mouth? It's good, right? Rubbish.
Kathy's, uh, yeah.
I'm making this assumption, looking at the timeline for at least the second round of interviews, but I guess I'll ask, ask you for the first round of interviews, those would be available to be attended by the public or not?
The first round interviews will be not, will not be, um, that'll be conducted just by the Personnel Committee and Kelly in attendance. The second round interviews, which we hope to limit to a max of three candidates, will be done by the full board. That would be a public meeting. So I do encourage you all to save the dates for those second round interviews. We do want to offer, um, those dates to the candidates so they can select. And because of how widely we're putting the word out, we may have candidates from out of state that have to travel in. And so we just wanna be as flexible as possible. So we have two additional dates that are outside of our regularly scheduled board meetings. That's, I think, September eighteenth.
I, I just really appreciated getting that, thanks.
Yeah, there, um, I mean, we can, I can make the motion to approve the job posting, job description as stated in these documents.
Hey, it's moved and properly seconded that we would, uh, approve the job posting and the, uh, job description as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you so much, Dora.
All three of you for the working at chair.
Yeah, and thanks to Kathy and Renee, uh, and thank you for letting me crash a meeting. I have heard, um, really good things, I think, about how you've already kind of engaged staff at the outset of the process. Um, and I know you'll continue to incorporate what you hear from staff and Laura and community as we move.
And I think where we went to be intentional, we, and there is some level of anxiety about the process. Uh, and I think a lot of just historical experiences, it's a big change at a leadership level. Uh, so we do want to just be in touch with staff. Uh, we may have other listening sessions or surveys, but at the very least, my commitment is once a month to just send an email to staff, that's what they wanted. Um, they preferred was email communication, just on the updates, even if there's not an update, just to say there's not much happening. Um, I think that's it. So we wanna keep building that.
Very good.
All right, that will bring us to the Facilities Committee. So Sharon, I will turn it over to you.
Um, the Facilities Committee met June the fifth. Thank you, Kelly, for spending here minutes. Um, and just briefly, well, our topics were, um, looking, and as you saw from the finance report, about ninety percent of the broken customer paid for the seven hundred and fifty thousand, I think, was a budget item. Um, an expense item. And, um, there's a few minor things that'll follow, but basically it's done. The elevator is in process and there is a proposal, a recommendation for one. And is that an agenda item to be voted on today?
No, I mean, I said, it was up for a new business discussion. Um, and I sent you the bids, but not
It's not on for tonight.
Not for voting, no.
Okay.
For discussion, yes.
For discussion. Um, we'll come back to that then. Um, the LED lighting, um, is in the process. And, uh, Steve says that, uh, there is no problem of doing something now that, that, that will affect our rebuilding. You know, changes, it, it's not duplicating or replacing something, so be fine. Um, and Steve, uh, I see has a contract with information that Kelly passed out in your packets. The MCD. And that, we didn't have it at the meeting, but, uh, you should know that that's important, important information. And, and involving the, uh, our addition, our new addition, our new property. I just wanted to mention that also Kelly did a great job of an assender handout of putting the faces with the numbers of the programs. Do you all have that?
Yes.
Yeah, I got that. And, and why I think that's so helpful is you have some place in your materials already. Three, three, three charts of each, each And each chart has the same twenty numbers or whatever of, of, and with that, whatever sheet does, it tells you the cost and the numbers of what's being done. So if you wanna look at your, your plan of the building, you can see number three, number ten, number twelve and where they are. More, much more easier than flipping through the, okay, which one is on, you know, where is on that? So hopefully it's a long-term project that'll make it easier to follow where we're at, what we already did. Um, and so the combination of that chart with, with your big three maps of each building, uh, should be easier to follow. So, thank you, Kelly. It was a lot of work, but I think it's very helpful. Um, we also talked about, um, the Ford EVs and both Jim and Kathy went to the meeting. Anybody else going to meet the two of you?
I did next week.
We did go, Kathy went, or Anne, who else?
Uh, Peter.
Oh, Peter, and, and so they talked with the two level chargers and what might be available and a more discussion about it. And, uh, we can ask them to talk a little more about it if I, if they're interested. And the right, we covered where uh, the post office road, um, we're gonna look at, make sure we follow up and seeing what's, we call post office road, but it's not really the road. Follow up on that in the future, Ernie's gonna take a ball in that. We asked Peter if he would look into a little more landscaping by the fountain. It looks pretty, uh, dreary there with the weeds and so forth. And that is the face of our library. So without spinning on the bottom line, can we just freshen it up a little bit? So it's just not weeds and dirt. And, uh, we talked a little bit about, um, outside storage, but I found out the outside storage isn't outside storage. It's the storage in the basement where all the, all the different, um, down there, you know, it's a big basement where you'd have to put your kids' toys and your kids' books. But it is organized, I'm a woman, Kathy, down there, but it is, it is a huge storage that you need here at library. Um, they, uh, basically talked about a few other things, but, um, that kinda covers the bases. And, um, you, you don't, you're gonna need to talk about the elevators.
They'll come up under new business.
So, uh, does anybody have any questions or, you know?
Why is it called Heather Hills?
Oh, okay, so I found out the war about this. I got it from Sally before she's decided to retire, but um, it Years ago, I was told, I can't remember who told me this, maybe Jacqueline or at least, that is because when the library, before we built the addition, they had off-site storage in a neighborhood called Heather Hills, but that's not the true story. The true story is they built the storage downstairs and the, uh, carpet was purple. And so one of the librarians, I can't remember who it was, Marilyn Smith?
I don't know.
Badwood college happened.
Like restoring our stuff in the Heather Hills. So that's why it was called Heather Hills, cause the purple carpet was there, yeah.
Glad to see it on my little library tour, I wanted to.
Well, I thought it was quite interesting, never been down in the basement. But there is a room where, um, the mothers, and I assume they still do not do this, but you used to be able to, um, you know, nurse their babies. And they have some, you know, so the privacy.
In that room, yes.
And so, you know, it's just times have changed a little bit.
Well, um, many years ago, that also used to be tech services, technical services where you order and, and process books and all that kind of thing. It was also the, um, uh, library for the blind. Was that Michigan library for the blind? Yeah, so, but that goes up to Lansing, so. It served a lot of purpose.
Well, I'm glad to ask that question because I've been wondering myself.
But, but you had told me it was because of, uh,
Yeah, whoever had told me this when I was first hired, they're like, oh, the, the street or whatever that the storage was on, it's called like Heather Hills or something, but.
I mean, everything in this building is purple.
I'm thinking of it's off-site storage unit, you already have nicknames for them, you know? And I'm worried, why isn't it included on their plan for, you know, extra storage?
Sharon, have a question, uh, have you all had a discussion on what have the discussions looked like in terms of communication to the public regarding all, all of the beautiful, wonderful things on that?
It, yeah, there's something on our website already and Sarah.
Well, and, and I, I think I wanna say something about that, right? Um, Sarah's got a few, she's already put out, you know, the fact that we approved this initial phase one.
Yeah.
Um, I think if you look at the timeline there from Steve, you'll see where there'll start to be architectural drawings and renderings. And at that point is where we'll be able to really more effectively communicate out via media, uh, to both councils. Um, what these projects will look like. So around that timeframe, you'll probably see like a press release from me and Kelly outlining the projects, um, with some
See around what this We had a lot of discussion with Sarah a couple of months ago about what, what could be communicated or should be communicated. She, she's, yeah, she was already ahead of all of that. And, and we just kind of filled in where we thought.
In fact, I think she's already sent like a draft press release for us, um, for that time.
Yeah.
So, um, good question though. Ellen Seven was in the neighborhood at, uh, Peterland's, uh, last week and I went by there to talk to them about our story. And suggest that they might, um, take some interest in telling the story of where FCL has come from and kinda where we're going now. Uh, so we'll see if they pick that up.
Well, it really, uh, struck me to give, it was, because, um, I'm gonna retire, eat like, uh, just people who are at Sally's retiree party. Um, and they're asking, well, how are things going now? And it's kind of exciting to be able to say, we got some plans that, you know, in the future. And some of those people were around when we were starting these discussions. And, and they're really happy to see it. So it's gonna, yeah, we really do need to, when we can, you know, just share it and
No, it's a very important piece of this too. Also, we think about the funding mechanisms, right? We're kinda self-funding phase one and we know we may for phase three wanna be approaching the public around it. And so it's really important that they have a strong understanding of the plan, what we're doing, what we're doing with the funding we already have, so they understand how efficient we have been, um, if we weren't that fast. That was really important. All right, any other questions, uh, for facilities? Sharon, thank you very much. Uh, Jim, who else is on facilities? Okay, she's been a superhero. Uh, really appreciate what you guys have done and are doing and, um, kind of the key that I that you keep to all of this. With relationship to the road, um, I will say, uh, Sharon mentioned that, you know, I talked with Gary about it some weeks ago, um, in person. And then also shared with him kind of the intelligence that Jill had dug up. Um, and I think we've arrived at the conclusion that what is needed are two things. One, a permit from the Oakland County Road Commission. And two, um, just sign acknowledgement and permission from the postal service to allow the work to be done, cause of course we may need coordination. I mean, there's traffic getting out of the post office, the trucks, all of that. So what I'm doing is approaching the Oakland County Road Commission about the matter. Um, to kinda ask them if they could maybe PM the situation for us in contacting the federal government to get their, uh, blessing. And I'll keep you posted. Um, that's kinda where we are right now, so.
Thanks for taking that on, Ernie.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be a tear up of all, tear up. We tear it up.
Based on the condition that it's in, I would think so. Um, we aren't doing the work though. So, I can't speak, I can't speak to that. Uh, Transwestern, I think based on the communication they had with Jill already, is waiting and wanting to do the work. And they own the majority of it. I think they might even be willing to do the whole thing. We'll kinda inspect that with them. Um, so I'll find out what they have in mind. If it was just kind of a reason, I'll, if it wasn't, you know, I'll, I'll find that out, gather to.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, that will bring us to finance. So Kathy, turn it over to you.
We hadn't had a finance committee in a while, but we've had it. So, uh, we explored updating support the library, which includes how to volunteer, friendsgiving, landgiving, endowments and facility naming opportunities in partnership with facilities. So those are all the things that we're looking at. Currently reviewing finance policy and will recommend any changes that the July 20th meeting, if we need. And that's it.
Any questions for finance? Uh, Stephen and I and Kathy, we are the finance committee currently. Uh, maybe I want to go into finance, Chris.
You're welcome.
But, um, it's
They're digging the idea of naming opportunities.
Yeah, but I thought you might have some things to offer in that space that we're treading into right now. Um, I think Baldwin Public Library has done a good job of kind of template for how you could message that. Look out at how they're doing that on their website and the collateral they've got. Uh, and Stephen has taken on the task of kinda working with Sarah to look at the collateral we've got and they kinda shore that up. So we'll bring you more information on that as that work goes on. So, thank you, Kathy. All right, that will bring us to unfinished business. Um, so we have the approval of our fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, on the agenda from last month.
Yes, you all looked at that. What I just wanna do is I wanna propose and adopt the twenty-five, twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget in the amount of eleven million, four hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and six thousand. Okay, I believe you're looking at the, um,
But it's been moved and properly seconded that we would approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Any, uh, discussion?
I'm just wondering if we can just keep talking about it for a few more months.
Cause our fiscal year starts at the end of the year.
All right, uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. And motion carries. That'll bring us to new business and we do have a May budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty five. So guys, you guys know. Uh in conjunction with staff and plant Moran, we kind of make budget amendments to reflect actual as we move through the year. Uh so Kathy, any thoughts on that?
Adding thirty four thousand seventy dollars to revenues. And a hundred and seventy four thousand five hundred to expenditure expenditures. Will change the twenty twenty five budget to eight million five hundred forty thousand four hundred thirty thirty five dollars. Um, I propose to amend the twenty twenty five fiscal year budget as presented.
Right, it's been properly seconded that we would amend the twenty twenty five fiscal year budget as presented. Any discussion? Okay, so you know, and all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? And motion carries. All right, that will bring us to the approval of our ADA compliance policy. Kelly?
Oh, yes. So um I I believe it's in our expected behavior policy where it talks about or some policy that you approved. That talks about ADA compliance policy and we're like, oh, we don't have one. So we asked the attorney, do you have a template? So she sent it this, the template. Um, we tweaked it, sent it back to her, so it's been vetted by the attorney and um. So I'm just asking for approval.
And thank you. And we prioritize our ADA items in our fiscal um. Yeah, activities, so that's a wonderful thing. Um, I'd entertain a motion to approve the ADA policy as presented. All right, it's been moved by Chris and properly seconded by Kathy that we would approve the uh American Disability Act Compliance Policy. Any discussion?
So under part two reasonable accommodations, number two. Says a request should be made within ten days, then later. About grievance, it says fifteen business days. Does that ten days? Need to be made clear that it's just ten days or is it business days?
So I think it's, is it two separate things? One is like where you make the request that you want, but if we don't do it and you have a grievance, you have fifteen days within. After if we didn't do it.
I just wanted to clarify that it was ten days, not ten business days that we.
Yeah.
So like in the first one, you reference ten days and then the grievance procedure, we say they have fifteen business days.
Two business days. That change, yeah.
Uh, like it doesn't matter, right? We're 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 seven days. I guess that was the question I had too. We're open every day.
Yeah, but the one that can make the combination may not be here to do that.
Okay, because everybody's gonna work seven days.
Right.
Well, if there's a holiday and it doesn't count as a business day, and so it wouldn't.
Okay, a business day, I think normalize the two working schedules.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
I make my motion as amended.
So will you know, Kathy?
Yes, Kathy, want to second?
I'll second.
Uh, so I made the motion to accept and now we have an amendment to add the word business, so I simply amended my motions.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Being none, all of the favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. That will bring us to the approval of our external core values uh or given here on this chart. Uh Kelly, want to talk a little about that?
So, yes, it was an exercise we did as a staff where we had a list of maybe twenty five core values and their definitions. And the staff voted on, you know, their top, I had made them pick five and then I sent it to you guys and you. Like five and so the compilation is the chart that, you know, the top one is respect. And so. Um, as we discussed it, we realized uh that. They're so similar in meaning. Some of the words are so similar in meaning and some of the definitions were so similar. And so. To get a broader sense, we sort of, and if you see on the sheet, the definition sheet for, you know, we combined. Like um, respect is also respect to kindness and diversity, because those were also, you know, three um. Values on there that were important too. So we kind of combined one to get one number, but took. Components of each one to adjust. And so these are the uh. Definitions that we came up with. This is being.
Right.
And yeah, uh we have internal, external, they're the same. Or values, it's just that the definitions are a little different because the way. We treat ourselves internally is a little different than we treat.
You can make copies of your day and agenda or like this in the ADA. I'd really like to see. You're talking about.
Yeah, they're online in the uh in the board package.
You don't have any physical copies?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so anyway, um, so anyway, I don't. I feel like it needs board approval, the external ones at least. And so this can be a discussion. I don't know if you want to approve today, you want to think about it. Read the definitions, think about it. What this ties into is the two ways to great, well, you know, great service for internally. For the internal ones and then just our strategy or. Guidance going forward for the public.
So can I just wonder, like, are we approving it?
Well, I feel like.
I don't know if you need to do that or not. That's why I left it up to you.
I don't think we need to approve it. Um, I was, I mean.
See our money.
We all received this, um, and I think you guys did a good job. You asked for our input, we gave our input to these.
And that's what I said in my email. I was like, I don't know if you wanted to prove it or not, so I'm bringing it to you and if you don't feel you need to approve it.
We can make a motion, so that it's recorded that we accepted. Yeah, we received and accepted. Okay, so I I. I'm I moved to receive and accept the external public core values as as presented in this document.
External and internal?
Do you want to do it as one thing?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. I meant my words.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carry. And then that will bring us to uh elevator payments for Armington.
Well, so we got in um. Five bids from four companies. One company submitted two different types of proposals. Um. And I believe Kelly sent you all the bids that we received as well as, did you also send them the uh like brochures? Yeah, so there's two brochures explaining the kind of different. Aspects of why we had two bids from one company. Um. Or we would like to go from there, like, is there questions?
What helped them? When you when you brought it to the facility, did you help us lay out? What needs to happen? And then like how code is changing and all that.
Yeah, can you describe exactly what they need to do and what the code is changing and that stuff?
Yeah, so um all these bids will. Essentially future proof us for at least, I think we know. Up until twenty thirty, there's going to be code changes and it will cover all that stuff. So in twenty twenty seven. There's going to be updates to uh door code. That will take care of all that. And in twenty twenty eight. State inspectors will start going around to facilities with elevators and looking at. Uh specifically how the elevator operates, if it's a single jack, a dual jack or um. A hoistway. And they will essentially tell you if you are a single jack, you'll have to update to either a dual or a hoistway. So that all these bids will also take care of it. The. One is a mono space. It's from Cone or Kone. I don't know how they say it. Uh but that is the hoistway one where it takes away. Um, the center cylinder entirely. They cut off probably. Uh maybe a few inches down and then just cap it off with some cement. And then it turns, everything will be electric and then it'll have a hoistway at the very top that just takes the elevator up and down. Um. And also we have an issue with the elevator now that when you go to the very top floor, it kind of rubs against. Something um the cylinder. It's uh it's like it has to do with the cylinder itself where it's not getting properly lubricated. So when it gets to the very top, it just. Bumps, like you'll feel like shaking a little bit. We've had Schindler come out, they've looked at it, they have said it is safe.
Is the hoistway cabling?
Yeah, so for the mono space.
Yeah.
That'll be um. So it's kind of like a wheel at the top. They'll have the cabling, they'll connect to the car and there'll be new tracks on the side uh walls that'll guide it up and down.
How does that cableing where?
Where?
Yeah.
Um. That's a good question. I can I can bring that up to. Uh, the company.
What's the lifespan of a cable?
Yeah.
That might be a good question. I mean, I don't know.
That's a good question, Kathy.
Do they, do they, but do they make any other kind of? Elevator at this point that doesn't have any things like cable?
Uh, yeah, so um the elevators we have now is like a hydraulic um. Like the hydraulic cylinder.
Oh.
So that's what it runs off of. The the mono space would be all electric plus like this cabling and it'd be more like an oil base kind of thing. The hydro mod, which is the second proposal from Cone, that is um. That is a mostly hydraulic still along with electrical updates instead of relays for the uh machine room.
I I a general question, so so I understand the the recommendation of of one of the. There's been looking through the bids, like the pricing seems like really different. What is accounting for that? Why different? Like, we're not talking like a couple of grand between. Some of those like the difference is several, like at least a hundred grand more.
Yeah. Um.
So in my opinion, I think it's because Cone or Kone or however didn't include the other. You know, the other costs that we would have to incur in order to, before they started to work.
Yep.
Yeah.
So outside, so this is primarily for the elevator itself. It's the machine room. It's replacing um. Everything from the relays to either updating the hydraulic box or getting rid of it. And then the cav, the interior interior of the hoistway, the pit, all that stuff. There are things outside of the elevator that will need to uh comply with. Nothing that will like actually stop the elevator from being used, but we'll have to. Add a smoke detector on each floor. Right now, there's only one on um the children's level. And then it'll tie into the panel and when they detect smoke, the elevator will. Uh automatically go to a floor, most likely the bottom floor, um open up and then kind of fault out until. Fire department comes in, clears it out. Um additionally, there's also, we'll have to have a wall. Installed. The new door, which I'm hoping we can kind of talk with the state inspectors and maybe see if we can. Um, circumnavigate that because we're doing an addition, but essentially we can't use our. Mechanical elevator room as a walkthrough, like how we do now, because the maintenance uh office is right there. Uh, so. We'll have to either get a wall installed or, like I said, I want to talk with the state inspector where they actually do their inspection and say, hey, we have. This planned in the future, once we have this addition, no one's walking through here anymore. We're taking all this stuff out and this is just. Mechanical room kind of thing. So that could hopefully save us on that. Um. There's one more.
Wasn't the sun pump, because you said that was up to code?
Yeah.
That was what they require.
Yeah, so I know in one of the bids, or actually in the Cone bid, right, it was. They required a something, so some pump that could do three thousand gallons per hour. Our sun pump that's currently in there does um roughly fifty per minute, so. Equal out to three thousand per hour, so it was out. We would, oh, I think I think that's part of it, though. We would have to have, they should do it, because I believe it was in the. Um, proposal for the elevator, but there would have to be an oil, water, oil separator. Um, just because we can't have oil pumping out into city sippers.
Okay, so I have a question um about what you said, basically. Um, to have all of the firms bid on the same requirement, because I I heard you say that some people included.
Some people like included the cost and they did not.
Okay.
But I don't know if it said, we did say all costs, though. Associated.
Um. Elevator.
For the elevator.
So like I said, the those additional costs, the smoke detector, the wall, that doesn't prohibit the update of our elevator, because our main focus was. You know, our elevator is old, it runs off of relays. If something goes wrong, they have to find an elevator that's out of service and. Essentially scavenge parts from that. So the big thing was that I asked them uh if they could provide optional. Uh pricing for that, just see where they're at. So we decided that we do want to go with that. Um, a lot of it, I think. It was only a hundred thousand, so I think we could probably do better by just directly going to our. High tractors, once the elevator is done, and be like, hey, we need to have this added, or hey, we need to have this added.
And we're, and just to be fair, time out downtown, because you said everything here will will meet code.
Yep, so um. This edition was done in two thousand and two. So the elevators are already up to it. Um. We actually might have to look into the doors to see, uh I can't remember the last time I talked to Schindler about that. If they said the doors in the new addition is are fine, but on the old uh original part of the building, we had modernization. Uh, I don't want to hear off the top of my head, but that brought, yeah, so that brought everything up. Those are dual jacks, I believe, so that will. Take care of that when they come in two thousand and twenty eight to look at our elevators.
Right, any more questions for Peter? Very helpful. Um, I think we'll bring us back next month. There's some reason I think we need to bring it back next month, but go ahead, uh see.
So just to get on clarification, because there are many documents, several like things from Cone. So I see one for. Thirty ninety seven thousand. It's for the Cone for mono space.
Also, I'll add, that will actually be a little bit more, because they have um. Middle of the proposal, something about uh a battery. Something I think I put it up, emergency battery lowering device, which is about eight thousand dollars, so that. I would recommend that we add that to it. Um, because that is other emergency stuff for lowering outside of like the smoke detectors.
So there's another document, was that just the price for the unit itself? Because there's another document that says. Um, it comes from holding mona, their equipment located at the address in about two hundred and forty seven thousand six hundred four.
It's the hydro mount.
That's a hydro.
Yeah.
So they they operate two different products, the mono and the hydromod?
It's as an either or uh he he asked which way we wanted to go and I pretty much said like, I I just wondered their best options. And he said he'll quote us on both, but. Uh, so the hoistway, so it'll take out the si- the mono. Five hundred or mono space will take out the main cylinder um.
Yeah.
That uh raises and lowers it and it will change it to a cabling at the top. Uh, um hy- hydromod will update that one to. A dual jack. But he did say that we'll have to, we will have to require extra drilling for extending the cylinder.
For the hydromod?
Yes.
The hydromod will have other additional. Need. Different.
So the the extra like drilling, doing all the other equipment is included in the price. So that two hundred and forty seven thousand includes removing the old cylinder, drilling the new uh hole deeper for the new cylinder.
What's the other price?
Um, a hundred. Ninety seven. Plus a plus an additional eight thousand.
So now they're getting pretty close together.
Uh well, a little bit closer, but not not closing the gap uh quickly.
The average person getting on it, will they've noticed or feel a difference between the two?
Oh, no, sir, not shaking, oh.
Oh, between the noise now, yeah. Between our old one and this and any type of new elevator, it's a smoother ride.
It's a better ride, okay.
I don't know if patients will notice, but I think staff will definitely notice. Stairs anymore.
Okay.
So but you can also, if you do think of any other questions, please feel free to let me know. I will reach out to all the companies and then the next meeting meeting for feeding. All right.
Okay, so I think we'll, thank you, Peter, we'll look for um this refresh, I think there's one consider it's gonna be adjusted maybe. Uh right thing for that eight thou.
It's it's in um the proposal itself, it's just.
That option?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the base price is at the top for a hundred and ninety four thousand or ninety seven thousand. And then if you scroll down a little bit more in the proposal, it'll say uh a emergency lowering.
Okay, perfect, um so I think we'll go back and uh review those in detail, uh we've all learned a little bit about how elevators operate today. And uh we will probably be emailing you with some questions, I think, um and we'll revisit this at our next month's meeting.
I just would comment that um I was staying in a hotel in San Antonio when the elevator fell.
Hmm, I was not in it, oh, but someone was.
Oh, no.
And um. We need to get ceiling reps, you know.
Yeah.
Once I got glad the Cone got the address right of the proposal, because I know it's a couple of other, the vendor didn't get the right address.
Yeah, um.
Location of where the workers.
I'm pretty sure those vendors also showed up to the wrong building on one of the days too, and then the next day they're like.
Look at the right elevator.
Yeah. They're like, there's too many elevators here, I thought it was only one.
Thanks, yeah, appreciated, um elevators, seems like that was a big topic when I was going in the board, um. Everybody was looking about our elevators because they just didn't work at that point. There they worked now and now we're upgrading, so thank you. All right, that will bring us to um elections, as you all know, we are arriving at the end of our fiscal year next month. We'll start a new fiscal year and so with that, we have the opportunity um to elect few officers. Um everybody should have a yellow sheet here um to kind of list our ballot if needed. Uh and so I would open the floor for nominations, Jim, keep me in line here. I'm gonna open the floor for nominations for the Office of President.
The attorney?
And the nominations don't have to be second.
Yep, yep. But the nominee has to accept.
Requisite part.
There was that.
Are there any other nominations for president? And seriously, because um. Any of you could sit in this seat, I think we have such an awesome board and we're all working um. Towards meeting the community needs very nicely, so, what are any other nominations for president?
I don't want to be the president of anything if I can't order open Marines.
Well, with that being said, I'll put my name down there and um I thank you for the vote of confidence and I will am willing to continue to serve.
Thank you, Ernie, you've done a great job.
Thank you. Um, next that will bring us to the Office of Vice President, are there nominations for the Office of Vice President?
Nominate Delara.
Delara, do you accept?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Okay.
Thank you.
Delara, congratulations, you will serve as Vice President into the next year, thank you for your support, you have. Doing an awesome job. All right, that will bring us to the role of Treasurer, are there any nominations for Treasurer?
To nominate Kathy.
Hey.
I know we can't second, but I'll second.
Um, would you accept, Kathy?
I accept.
Hey, are there any other nomination for Treasurer? Okay. Kathy, congratulations, um really do thank you for um your efforts in the area of finance and um. Keeping us aligned so we can do some of these things that we're now able to do and the community can see.
And walking up to that whole Michigan class thing, that was really great.
Thank you, yeah. All right, so now that will bring us to Secretary, are there any nominations for the role of Secretary?
I nominate Mr. Jim White.
Mr. Jim White, do you accept?
I do, I just want to say, I understand the other three options really. Maintain continuity, there's nothing magical about maintaining the continuity of secretary, if anyone else is is interested, but uh yeah, I accept.
Good job, yeah, you retired now.
You're retired, you have more time to secretary.
Okay.
Wow, are there any other nominations for Secretary? Okay, seeing done, I'll put Jim White's name in, so congratulations everyone, it looks like we are steady stable into the next fiscal year. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you all very much. The one time I had the subs like that, I've had.
He has no one but.
Well, Stephen, you did a great job, I thought it could be a toss up, I didn't build in that one time, so. Um but in all seriousness, um. In all seriousness, I really do appreciate your efforts, you know, for the public's awareness, nobody sitting at this table receives any compensation or enumeration for serving as a library trustee. Uh we do this because we care about the community and we want to deliver um. Most innovative library services that we can to the community, and so I really just appreciate all of you. Being here in this walk as we do that, um especially with all of the projects that we've taken on. Um and I really do enjoy working with all of you, uh the only one that won't be here next year is this one, so.
Want to be on the board? No.
That's not feeling.
You know, we're, I I should tell you, though, we are. Putting my job list in, I did write a letter very minute and I will share it with all of you, I gave it to Ernie in the personnel committee. And I will share it with the rest of you, just so you know, it is official. Thank you, official date.
Really nice.
Yeah, well, thank you. All right, that will bring us to correspondence, do we have any official correspondence?
No, not not to the board contact address.
Thank you very much, um now that will bring us to public comment and this is the time that the public has to communicate with the Board of Trustees. Each person um that would like to address the board has three minutes, we'd like to ask you to let us know who you are, where you are from. And then proceed with your comments, once you get uh maybe about thirty seconds out from the three minutes, you basically need to raise my hand just to signal to you that. You're approaching the time, okay? Uh I don't know who arrived first, I think maybe Dr. Dopey arrived first, um but we'll let you guys go and then you wish you'd like.
You know, then I'm Sophie, I'm. Minutes from here, so first of all, thank you all of you for everything that you do for the community. And I want to give a special thank you to trustee member Christine for for asking the question, you know, how we can get the ball rolling on an event for Palestine. And we appreciate that there was uh a dance event held yesterday. For our community, but we are asking specifically to an event about Palestine. And the reason that we are asking that is that this library has an obligation to do so. Because this library held a concert for Israel, Israel is committing genocide in Palestine. Israel has murdered over ten percent of the population in Gaza, including over twenty thousand children. And when I say children, half of that are kids under the age of ten, most of them babies, okay? You can see lots of videos of crushed baby heads, crushed baby legs. Gaza has now the biggest population of child amputees in history, so you can see videos of three year olds without legs. Yeah, three months old without legs, so i- it is very serious. Uh that there has not been a response at this library for Palestine and we have been asking you since November twenty twenty four. We brought in a petition with over a hundred signatures on it of residents and it it's as if. You you held an event for Russia, but you won't allow an event for Ukraine, it's as if you held an event for Nazi Germany, but you won't allow an event for the victims of the Holocaust. Every hospital, every university, every school and every public library in Gaza has been bombed, destroyed. And all we're asking you is to give a platform to the Palestinian people, so for example, uh I I I sent to you a couple of weeks ago. The requested speaker, Wade Ara, she's a civil rights attorney, she represented the people of Flint when they didn't get clean water. She, her organization was nominated for the Nobel Peace Prize, she ran for Congress, she also wrote a book. Why can't she come and speak at the library? Uh we we suggested also a Nikva survivor, the story of being expelled at gunpoint. From your village in Palestine and making your way to Michigan and then becoming a PhD in sociology. And then sitting here in the Farmington Hills Library, that's a story worth telling. So we are still asking, begging you, please allow the Palestinians to have a voice at the Farmington Hills Library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To um Go West. My friend's not right here, um. Sorry, I had this pulled up. Um.
I'm sorry, could you tell?
Oh, I'm sorry, I totally, I was already getting in it, uh my name is Stacy Kyle, um and I'm from Livonia. But I live in Farmington Hills now for the past like four and a half years, if I can find a job in the next month. Um but and and by the way, as I'm like reading this, I'm not reading it to make anyone feel bad or anything, I just need to. Relate just a fraction of what I have seen and and felt. Um so um you know, she said about ten percent at least of Gaza's population. We're talking. So far, at least four hundred thousand people murdered. Four hundred thousand people since the beginning of October twenty twenty three, and by the way. Prior to, uh on October sixth, twenty twenty three, you can find the article, it had already been the deadliest year for Palestinian children. And both the West Bank, mostly in the West Bank. So please also keep in mind that as uh people advocate for Gaza. Um rightfully so, the West Bank is also facing, I mean honestly utter annihilation. And. As Palestinian citizens of Israel also are not free. I also want to mention that Israel is still bombing, shooting and attacking thousands of civilians in Lebanon. Uh and many people in Syria as well. Also, they've, now, it's mostly on us, Yemen, but they have also bombed Yemen as well. But this was actually from earlier this year and it was sixty five doctors, nurses and paramedics talking about what they saw in Gaza. Okay. So uh it, the photographs are just like x-rays, but these photographs of x-rays were provided. By Dr. Mimi Sayed, who worked in Khan Yunis from August eighth to September seventh, or September fifth. She said. I had multiple pediatric patients, mostly under the age of twelve, who were shot in the head or the left side of the chest. Usually, these were single shots. The patients came in either dead or critical and died shortly after arriving. Now, this was, I mean, this was like, we're talking last year. Recently, what I have heard testimonies of and seen some videos of, so as you know, Gaza is on the sea line, so they have a beach. And unfortunately, right now, you know, one and a half million people are displaced and many of those people are in tents on the beach, like that's where they're living. Through the rainy season, through the cold season, through everything, while being starved, bombed, diseases, um all of that. But Israel is dropping not just bombs, they're dropping bunker buster bombs on tents. And then what's been happening lately, and these are children who are testifying to it. So these children. Wake up, they've just survived the bombing of their tents, they've got no idea what's going on, they have no idea if any of their family, if they're still alive, are still alive. And um then they see drones come in to pick off survivors. To shoot these children. Um, there was a, a kid, I I saw testimony from a kid earlier, he's ten year, ten years old, he asked, they've been telling them. You know, kids go to heaven, right? That's where they go, that's where your friends went when they were just killed in front of you, and he said. How can my friend go to heaven without a head? Because he saw his friend without a head. And I understand, like, you know, you you have to play kind of a delicate balance, I I I understand. However, we're talking about four hundred thousand people dead, more dying every day. And I just, I I log on every day and I see children. Trying to care for their families or begging for death. Um. I have a niece who's two years old and the woman I'm, young woman I'm raising a fundraiser for. Uh she lost her nephew this past January, um and it just. It just really hurts my heart to know that there are people. Um in this community who are just suffering so much, um and. Um people who are seeing not just their families in their homeland, many of whom still cannot set foot in their homeland. Um. And they see their tax dollars go to it and they try to get the library to stand up and support, so what I'm asking is, I know it might be difficult and you might have to jump through some loopholes. But maybe have some discussions, but I would really appreciate it because I love, you can see, I love coming to this library. Um I would really love it if this library could really take a stand, take a strong stand. And stand just for what's right. Um. We always say if we were in Germany, we would stand up and do something and this is the Germany. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to ask speakers to please respect. Any other speakers?
One speaker. Sit down, not for lack of respect, but for the niece. And I'm grateful to hear you talking about ADA stuff today and amazed that's like, it hasn't ever been addressed here at this library before, right? I think as somebody that's, this is my first time at this meeting, it's a. Moment of reflection on places where we might be moving too slow, but we're catching up, right? So I think the issue that the previous speakers brought could be an issue for catching up. My name is Jenny, my name is Jenny Teed, um I'm a Livonia resident, I live right on the border of Farmington at eight in Farmington. And I um teach here at the YMCA in Farmington and face pain occasionally at community at schools and. I um I've only been in Livonia four years, I moved from Detroit, I'm fifty four, that's the first fifty years of my life in Detroit and now I'm in Livonia. And I bet many of you can probably imagine what that may feel like. Um, I wish I was in Farmington, Farmington Hills, much more of a diverse. Space where I feel a lot safer and comfortable because of the diversity of people that I see. When I'm here, when I'm in these spaces, and so occasionally I'll go to the Civic Center Library in Livonia and. I use book sales, great, and just happened, but when I need a library, I usually come here and especially if I'm coming right from the Y. Um I love your staff here, they're all super helpful, I love the events that you do here, I come sometimes to um community equity organization meetings here. I'm glad that those are hosted and welcome here in the space, I was excited to see that you're gonna have a table at the Juneteenth. Um fair at the church and with fame, when I moved out to Livonia, I would look to see who was doing diversity work there, one, two of the first groups that I learned about. Um and so when I learned from Sophie about this issue around Palestine. My mother was an educator, my parents were educators, my dad was a social worker, um. I grew up in the Detroit Public Libraries and I was lucky that we had so many libraries and you have a downtown library, it was a place to escape. It was a place to find a nook and a book and um, not that I didn't feel safe in Detroit, I will make that clear, but it was just a a. not that I didn't feel safe in Detroit, I will make that clear, but it was just a, a, as library people, you know what that means. I've always loved librarians because librarians are people who are willing to take the risk because they're based on knowledge and freedom of knowledge and freedom of speech, and they know that everybody, no matter where you're coming from, um, diverse, well, level of income should all have access to information. And so I'd really like you to look at this as an issue of access to information. I think right now, no matter where you are politically, you can understand that we're in a place where information is being taken away intentionally from us. And so the libraries need to continue to stand and resist against that. I don't know if Farmington particularly has had um income cuts already from the current administration, but I certainly, I'm sure you're looking at that lurking. Um, but you need to resist that because these are the spaces. You mentioned the libraries in Palestine. And I reminded you of the children's book that I have that I had forgotten about, I'm gonna need to pull out about a library in Palestine decades ago. Who's, collect, when the library was bombed, before that she was able to collect a lot of the books and take them to her house. And I learned so much from that, both about what was happening in Palestine for so long. Um, and I also started saving books because I can imagine the time where we're not gonna have access to books. And so while we have this, and especially your, I was also glad to hear this is your core value meeting, yay for core values and your core values look great. And I see the combination of those happening, and I can see why you need to, as an educator who does classroom rules with my kids all the time. You kind of gotta shrink all the ideas that kids come down to, so it's clear. But I hope when it starts showing up in your publications, that the word diversity stays there, right? Because again, with, with the administration really trying to pull at diversity, equity and inclusion, we need to make sure the word diversity doesn't disappear under respect. So thank you for listening, thank you for doing what you're doing. Um, my, my husband and I are renting and looking for a place to live, and we've both been talking about Farmington or Farmington Hills a little bit. I like the nature of the way that you guys work together, it seems very casual. And um, meeting was led well, and so congratulations to the remaining board leadership. Thank you.
Other speakers.
Yes, my name is I'm a farming and I'm a resident. I'm Palestinian, my family lives in Palestine, they've been here more than twenty-five years. I raised all my kids here, I have eight years old, she's the youngest and after the war in Gaza, she, she got very involved with what's going on because my mother, my sisters, everyone back home. So everyone is affected with what's going on in Israel. And when she sees something in public going for Israel, she keep asking how come we're not, we don't have any event? So yesterday she was so excited to have an event in public to represent her culture, her country, where her mom and dad from. So if you um start doing something for those kids, I, I know that there's a lot of Palestinian families in Farmington, Farmington Hills all over. Every kid is effect, got affected from what's going on back home. So, um, if if you go with one cul- culture and refuse to do with the other culture, I don't think this is what America, what we came here for. As I told you, I've been here for more than twenty-five years, I raised poor boys. And this is the first time that we have to deal with something that, yes, we've been, we left in Doomville, elsewhere, there's a lot of Israelis kids there. And they were treating uh them as Palestinian equally. But after October seventh, everything is changed. I'm not sure how um you accept that for your kids. If you have kids, my, my older kids got affected too from uh the high school. The same thing, so if everyone have a kid and he accept that for his kids to be treated different because he's Palestinian, that's what happened in public school and having now in public library, I don't think that's what um what do you say, um, this is the way America built for. I think it should be diverse for everyone to, to show his culture, to be equal. And when some, some genocide is going on, we have to say it's genocide going on. Not to protect them because they are Israeli and stay with, with them, that's what I think was going on. We're staying with the bad people because we want to cover. Yeah, maybe you'll be surprised, but that's what's going on, especially in schools too. Everyone is, we don't want to talk about it because it's not our issue. But kids are affected with it, so as much as there is a public events for that country, for Palestine, because it's a country, it's not an Israeli country, it's Palestinian country, that will show them that they exist here in this country. That's it, thank you.
Can I just say one thing I forgot, there's two very small within thirty seconds, I forgot to say.
I will allow it.
I really appreciate it. One is the part of the problem with what's happening right now in the world, particularly that particular issue, is people don't know. And they don't know the history, they don't know what's happening now, some of us are in the right circles and are seeing that stuff. Um, but you have to be in the right circle, you don't really know. And so I feel like that's one of the roles of the library is to make sure that people know. And the other thing that's really important, when I looked at your agenda, is your um your, your plan for the year, your strategic plan for the year. And number three point two was getting voice from the community about things that they want to see. And that that was the one thing that you haven't gotten to yet, and so I think this is a really good time to, to listen to, reach out, listen to the people who are here today, listen to the other voices from the community to create um diverse, fair, equal programming. Thank you for that, Mr. 30.
Yeah, thank you for the, for the comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will consider public comment closed. We appreciate your comments, um, the board will digest those comments, staff as well. And um, we really appreciate everything you share with us, um, and your patronage of the library. So we look forward to continuing to partner with you.
Thank you.
Right, that will bring us to trustee comment. Uh, is there any trustee comment?
Well, the, the public is leaving, I just want to make sure I'm clear on because we keep, it seems like we keep replaying this, but I guess that sort of leaving, but um what I, what I think I had been hearing is that, yes, we, we hosted a, a cultural program at the library. The library's name was on as a library program for Jewish and Israeli music. And we have not done a, an equal program for Palestinian culture, but we have offered the opportunity, I think. And, and we've also offered the opportunity to have, to open, to provide a room uh, for a speaker who would like to come in, but in that case, if it's more of a message about, about this, uh, what is happening in, in Palestine and Gaza right now, that would not necessarily be able, that's not, that doesn't fit with a library program. And so it would not have the FCL logo on it, but they are welcome to come in and use a room to do that. Is that, is that what we've communicated?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, any other trustee comment? Okay, seeing no other comments, I think we can consider ourselves adjourned.